Seven o'clock, everyone's here, I'll call emitting the order.
Let's allegiance to flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands the nation and the government, indivisible, with the objective justice for all.
Have you entertained a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second. Motion or second discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. And the minutes of the November eighteenth meeting, have you entertained a motion to approve them?
So move.
Second. Motion and second discussion, your questions, any corrections? Got a motion and second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. And the bills in between, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight point seven seventy-eight, I've entertained a motion to approve them.
So move.
Second. Motion and second. Any questions, discussion? Motion and second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. And the current claims, thirty thousand, eight forty-nine ninety-nine, have a motion to approve them. So move. Question and a second. Discussion or questions?
Got a couple of questions.
Okay.
On the Gunderson, Palmer, and Nelson, uh, DF property owner's case.
Holder calls.
Holder calls.
Yep.
Okay. I didn't recognize that.
Okay.
And then, uh, back on page three, bottom of the page, are there no corrections, inmate labor? Where were they used?
I think most of this was at the golf course, wasn't it Harley?
Uh, we, it's half and half. We've got four inmates total, two with the street department slash parks and two with the golf course.
And I was going to mention to you, we paid travel again for Emily to go to Rapid City to buy supplies for my daughter's food pack.
File it.
What, what page is that on?
Uh, page two.
Why doesn't she use the city pickup?
We can charge her rings out, but she did take the wrong car.
It'd be a whole lot cheaper if she was the city pickup.
Cause we've talked about getting as many supplies here in town or how we delivered that we weren't, or to do that again.
Some of the stuff she can't buy in town.
I don't know, can I see a lot of bills from the grocery store for beach and that's what's on hand?
Yeah.
I don't know, was it due to the conference or what was that?
For Emily?
Yeah.
That was for getting supplies.
It's my turn.
Your turn.
How come we paid sixty dollars to Norton Sinclair for balancing tires when we have a balancer at the street shop?
Okay Joe.
Number one, about halfway down.
I did not ask on that today. You asked me this morning, I, I didn't, never asked anybody first. Anybody know whether that machine is even working? I would guess it is, cause we haven't had a tire for a long time. But I can't say that for sure without funding. Okay.
I'd like to know if somebody'd find out for me.
You bet. Any other questions on the current claims?
All I got.
Got a motion and second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. And communication from the public down the halls here from Pete Lee, we asked some questions off the ag activity.
Well, I talked to Harley a little bit and I was explaining to him through the series of events that happened from about April on, on how the ag got to where it was. I saw at the last meeting that the subject had come up, so I just offered to come up and give you guys a summary of how the events kind of transpired to get to that point. So if you don't mind, I'll just go through kind of what transpired between now and then and then you guys come up with any questions that you didn't cover. Um, when we took it on, we were told that the grass needs to be kept to a certain height around the area and also that you guys use that area to spread your biosolids. And there are certain requirements of what can be planted there, when it can be planted, how high the grass can get, and so forth. We went forward to, um, in April to make an agreement with the feed yard to go ahead and plant that area out like you have in the past with them all alone. What happened though is the city was notified and so was the feed yard that they weren't going to get water because it was our understanding that you guys were on the irrigation district, but it turns out you're not truly on the irrigation district, you have discretionary water in the irrigation district. When that came to light, the feed yard decided that they did not want to plant that because they didn't feel they could get anything off of their bean as they couldn't graze the area. So we went ahead and we moved forward to see if anyone else would go ahead and plant that area dry land crop with the trace needed for the biosolids. We couldn't find anyone to plant it that way. So Tracy did a whole bunch of work, he went back and did all the soils testing to see if it was possible to let anyone graze it off, cause the, at the time, the feed yard said that they might take another look at it if they could graze it again, they just didn't think they could get their money off of it by cutting it. He went back, your phosphorus was off the charts originally, I think he thought your nitrogen were high, but it was actually the phosphorus, which meant that if we planted it out in the feed and then we brought something in to graze it off, that that would help balance your nutrients again on that site. He had a specific mix, we went back to the feed yard, we offered that deal to them, said you plant it to this mix, you can graze it off, would you like to lease it now? They said no, we offered it to a leasing that was next to, on adjacent property that Pete Lean and Sons owned, they said no, we still don't think we're going to get our money off of it, cause we would have to spray and we would have to seed it and there's a good chance that nothing's going to grow there, cause obviously no one will ever see it like this year. We then went back again and we asked the feed yard again, okay, do you want to plant it? They said no, we don't want to plant it, but we will plant it for the city if they'd like us to plant it. At that point, we went to the other leasing and said, would you like to plant it and graze it off at no cost, just as long as we graze it off, because it'll be a cost avoidance at this point now for the city, because you guys were up against a deadline where you were going to have to haul biosolids into town. So there was going to be a disposal rate there, so we were trying to balance that out for you. Um, at that point, the leasing said, yeah, I'll do it. So he ended up spraying the site for weeds, paying the feed yard to plant it out for them, and then it, it grew this year obviously, even without the irrigation, you guys have plenty of water out here to grow anything it seemed like. So now he's in there grazing it off. So at the end, what you're going to have is a nutrient balance for the costs of leasing that area out, but there's no cash exchange for it, it was simply to avoid that cost of you guys having to haul those biosolids to town. I think your staff did a great job, quite honestly, because they were able to balance it out without risking the public's money by going out and having the spraying costs and the planting costs in there and having you guys absorb those and hopefully being able to just eat them off. You guys don't have cattle, Pete Lean and Sons doesn't have cattle, and there is no guarantee that you're going to find someone else to come in and graze it. Um, right now, everyone's kind of cattle poor and feed rich at this point during the year, so I'm not sure we would have found someone had the city planted it themselves and tried to graze it off themselves. On the grass side, we had a custom cutter coming, because we're kind of under a deadline and you guys are getting a little bit too high on the hay for safety concerns. So we had a custom cutter coming and he cut, um, a good portion of it, he tried to hit the stuff that was at least halfway usable first. And those first probably thirty bales that he took were about fifty percent crested wheatgrass. Another sixty to seventy bales, they're actually sitting down in Pete Lean and Sons adjacent property right now, were cut after that. Those are over fifty percent vine weeds, sandbers, cheat grass, wheatgrass, witch grass, kosher and kosher vines, all of which hadn't been sprayed on that property for years based on what we can tell. Um, it may have been seeded in the past, I don't know if the seed never took or what you guys had, I don't have any history on those fields as far as what had been planted there in the past, so we're just kind of going off of everyone's best recollection. Right now, it would be my suggestion that you burn those bales, but you're more than welcome to come down and take a look at them and see if anyone here thinks they can sell them. Um, Pete Lean and Sons wouldn't sell them, just because they're not a quality that I'd be comfortable selling to anyone, because they are full of all of those, um, burrs and so forth, little past gun rasses and livestock and so forth, and most of the similar with that concept, so I won't go into the details there. So that is sitting down on our property, we did move it off of the property because you guys were having a fly-in and we wanted to make sure that the site looked good through your fly-ins, so we hauled it all down to our property. It's sitting in a good, good pile right now. I would like to burn that and I need an answer on that probably within the next three months, because we want to make sure we get it burnt before it emerges next spring, then we have a giant weed pile out in our field from where those bales have just been passed.
Do you have a place to burn it right now, where you have it?
We, yep, we can burn them down on our property right now, but I'm more than comfortable if anyone wants to come down and take a look at them before we burn them, just to make sure you guys feel the same way. We've had several people come and take a look at them, thinking maybe we could sell it to someone that was eating goats or anything like that, it's just not something.
It's called grinder hay.
No.
Yes. First off, I'm gonna, we, we haul our biosolids out to the airport, we don't haul them from the airport to town, just so you get that clarified.
I didn't say you haul them to town, I said we were hauling them out there, you were going to haul them to Rapid City if you did not have areas to spray them on.
We had it on that area.
Tracy said no, that you did not.
Well, do we have any, do we have any current actual samples, the phosphates and nitrates? That's the two that, that's the two things we need to be concerned about. I talked to Tina Pyrtic, Pyrtic with the DNR, she never gave anybody a letter about, a permission letter to run cattle out there. She said you can run cattle if you meet the current levels.
Biosolids levels.
No.
Phosphates.
Phosphates and nitrates. And I was kind of hoping maybe we gave you a current test, so we know where we're at.
We have the latest tests, they're scheduled again for this spring, I don't know if you have the, the, the.
I know Tracy, I don't have the actual test, Tracy runs all the tests and gives me the results to let me know that it's okay to graze, but I know he did run them between five seventeen and five twenty-three of this year, he ran the phosphorus test.
I actually talked to the guy that you had hired that originally started hay in that property, he sold part of the hay.
I'm sure he did.
So I mean, it couldn't have been that bad if he was selling it.
True, but I don't know anyone in their right mind that would actually cut seventy or a hundred bales of hay only to take fifteen and split the other good with you.
Apparently did. So apparently it's what you're telling us, we're not going to get anything.
Well, no one's going to cut those other seventy bales for free.
But you guys didn't put all of the hay up, actually.
We put everything we could up until, we put everything we could up until it rained to the point where we were going to start readying up the fields.
Well, now, that seventy-five acres of farm ground, now, it takes twelve, ten to twelve pounds per acre to seed that, takes four acres per bag, or, it takes approximately nineteen, twenty bags to seed seventy-five acres. The, uh, the sedan seed is about forty-three, fifty for a fifty-pound bag, it takes, uh, like I say, nineteen, twenty bags, so you got a total of eight hundred and seventy boxes for twenty bags. Now this isn't taking in consideration the fuel and paying them to farm it. Uh, the current price on that sedan that they chopped was about thirty-two, forty ton. Now, if you get twelve and a half tons per acre on seventy-five acres, that's nine hundred and thirty-seven tons, which comes out to about thirty thousand dollars. You take that seed out there, you're down to about twenty-nine, five. So there was some money to be made off that farm ground, apparently.
There, there's always money to be made off farm ground if you're willing to gamble with the public's money. And your staff wasn't willing to do that, and I, I commend them for it, because I wouldn't have been willing to do it with the public's money either. I would have done it with my own money, I would have done it with Pete Lean and Sons' money, but I would not have done it with the city's money. There's every chance that you would have lost everything and ended up having to haul that biosolids to town and pay for the disposal and lose all the money that you had in there.
We have plenty of ground out there to administer biosolids for years.
That wasn't what the city had for information when we made the decisions that we made.
And who'd give you that information?
That would be your staff.
Do you let people graze your properties free?
Sometimes.
All of them out there, but we're all that graze, you have people graze them free?
It depends on certain properties, we do let people come out and graze certain areas of them, if there's not a lot of area there to graze, and it's not something we can graze every year, but we do need fire removal, just to deal with the fuels there, we will have them come out and graze it.
We had a guy put the hay up out there, was that two years ago, Tim Lamont?
Ten months last when they moved.
What did he pay us?
I'm not sure, I cannot tell you that.
Well, he wasn't here in my time, so it would have been prior to me.
See, Pete Lean leasing out ground for cattle is different than the airport. Airport is FAA funded grant money. And any profit, that net profit that comes off there has to be returned to the airport.
Certainly.
Cause if you don't.
And that's within the city's portion of it, any money that came to us through any payment, what's the lever, would have went directly to the city. Right now, Pete Lean and Sons has tons of man and machine hours in out there cutting those seventy bales that I suggest you just burn, and we're not asking for any payment for any of that work. And I think you would agree that that is also an investment.
Your farmer manager, I forget his name right offhand.
Bert Jox is our landlord.
I talked to him, and you had issues with John at the beginning, and at first I took Bert all the way around and showed him what we had liked to cut for weed control and that, like we do. And all that, think the cut, he said it got pulled off because they had other things that Pete Lean wanted done.
Absolutely.
So, in my opinion, you guys are no better than John was, you know, for getting, getting things done, cause as airport management, we're out there wondering, excuse my French, what the hell can we do? You know, what are we allowed to do, what are we not allowed to do? And, uh, we've just been left out of everything, you know, basically. This lease agreement, I don't know who wrote this up, you know, Foles leasing, tenth grader or what, but the farming out here, you got three lines on it. You have nothing on weed control, uh, reseeding, property inside fenced area, uh, maintain, maintaining fences around there, where Gary Romi had his cows running in there, you know, Phil up years ago put up electric fence around it. I drove around there, the fence half down the spots, electric fence was enough, you can see where his cows rubbed in spots, moved the fence, you know. Anyway, if you're ag related to anything, you know, all of them issues have to be in there. You know, running cows, we should have got so much per head, in my opinion, for running grazing rights. I agree. You know.
I, I agree if the market's there, market was not there for it at the time. At the time, you guys were under a time crunch to get those biosolids on the ground, we had to get something planted so you could apply the biosolids, we had to take the best deal in town, the best deal in town was the one that put the city at no risk at that time, so that's the deal that was taken.
Biosolids, and where they planted sedan grass, you probably, they probably put probably, at the most, twenty acres of biosolids, the rest didn't get it, the rest was inside the fenced area.
And I can't speak to where they actually do the application, Tracy has all his mapping that takes care of that, so.
Well, he's out there, so.
That's on his decision making, same thing with cutting the grass, those portions have to be cut before Tracy can go ahead and spray anything with biosolids out there.
Legally, you can't even run livestock or anything on property to apply biosolids for at least thirty days, so.
True, there's timing issues and we were working through that and that's also in the lease agreement.
Well, I guess, Don, I got a question, how, how long is your temporary memorandum of agreement, how long was you intending to have this?
Till we have the final contract in place.
I, I think we need to, uh, do away with this personally, because I, I don't understand what, the city can take care of our own property, we don't, just let Pete Lean do the mining, hunt the property that they're supposed to be mining, and let the city take care of our own property. I, I just, I don't understand why we need anybody telling us what to do with the rest of the property, it don't make sense to me.
But in my opinion, I think that they'll do a better job of managing that ag property than we will as a city.
So then every year, what, you want to just, I guess, make nothing off of it?
We've never gotten anything for the hay in the past that I know.
Oh yeah, Tim Lamont paid the city.
Pardon me?
Tim Lamont paid. Look, there's no reason we couldn't, you can lease it out.
No, we just.
Just like the farm ground, you can lease it out, it's just, it's just poor management.
This is up to the council, council decision, we did that until we had the final contract in place. The ag is all in the final contract right now, as you've had, or as you've seen, if we don't want it in there, I'm sure Pete Lean would be happy to get rid of the ag for us.
You said this is council action, council never knew nothing about this, it was just you.
It would be council action if you didn't want to do that.
I don't see any reason why the airport managers can't control this. We've been controlling the past, we got bales full of goat heads and sandbers and everything else. It's just bad management.
That's what I'm trying to say, is that I don't think that we can manage the ag property properly.
These guys came to us this spring and advised us, actually last year, that that needed to be sprayed, to take care of the weeds. Ag just came on board last winter.
No, a year ago.
Year ago?
July.
And he used to cut hay and stuff, was it out there or?
Yeah, we cut, John and I cut hay. We cut hay out there, it was part of Keith Miller's, it was part of the wage thing or something, so that the city didn't have to pay him as much, because it was city controlled. But we took hay off there, we took over a hundred bales off there one year, and yeah, it had weeds in it, but we didn't have to feed it to the goats and we didn't have to burn it, hell, we were feeding it to horses.
Sure, it's prairie, I mean, that's just to be expected.
It's prairie hay, that's right, it gets goat heads and puncture weed and sandbers, but it does need to be treated, I will say that, it wasn't prime hay, it's not alfalfa, but it's prairie hay. And it's feedable and, I don't know what Tim Lamont's deal was, I just know what Ed and I and Tom Murray did, but we got a hell of a lot of hay off, we cut the whole damn thing clean too, we didn't leave it raggedy looking in weeds like it is now.
Well, I will give you this, um, as far as the treatment of the weeds, Tracy had asked us to treat for the weeds and to plant this coming spring, so we are willing to go ahead and do that. It's really up to you guys.
You can give the crops to Gary once he gets it all planted?
Excuse me?
You can give the crops to Gary once he gets it all planted, or does the city can get some?
Gary won't be planting, we'll plant the grass and the, the other portion of this is, we took this on right in April and May, we already have our farming for the year planned out. So we were doing this and worked with the city to let them know that we were going to have to contract this portion of the work out this year, because we already had our equipment and our staff booked out. We pulled back in when we started having trouble with the custom cutter over there and we did as much as we could before the field started to get too wet to handle. So, you know, in our, in our defense, we do run seventeen thousand acres of, of property that I lease and manage every year. I also run five thousand personally, I also run two hundred head of cattle, I do know what I'm doing, Pete Lean and Sons does know what they're doing, and we can handle this small hay field with our operations. That being said, I'll leave it up to the city council, as far as if this is something that you guys want to handle personally and deal with every year, or if you want us just deal with it within our operations.
Okay. You were, you were basically done with the history, right?
I was, did you have some other questions?
Okay, any of the questions have done yet? Okay, thank you, we will get back to you on what we want to do with the contract. Any other communications from the public? Yes?
My name is Mary Guley, and there's rumors that fly around a lot, I'm here to ask questions, so I can get my questions answered, so I know what to say to people and how to respond. These questions are about the plunge. My first question is, when I was here at a meeting, a long time ago, I came with the understanding that there was going to be a group of business people that were going to run the plunge and not the city council. Is that true?
No.
No?
At one point, we could have had a parks and operations board to run it, but the council has elected not to have that board, they wanted a little bit more control over it than the board would have given them.
So the council is in charge now?
Uh, actually, it's administratively done, but the council has the final say, yes.
The council has the final say and then the advisory board advises that, that board.
Yes.
Okay, got it. So somewhere that changed, okay. The second thing I read in the paper was that the funds were going to run out at, I believe, the end of January? The money that they make in the summer, the summer months is where it's lucrative, and then the rest of the year gets iffy. Is that true? The money's going, that money from this summer will run out sometime in January.
Harley, can you give us a really a brief update financially of where we are on the plunge? Sure, sure. The city took it over in the middle of the summer, so we did not have a full year of summer revenue to work with. We'll have six months of this year, took over the first of July is when the, when the city officially took over. We have, uh, and where you're getting your information from is that I did mention that after the four-month review, we were sitting with two hundred and twenty-five thousand in round numbers left in the bank at the end of October after four months of operation. We were running at, for October, about thirty thousand a month in expenses, and we should, with the current money, without even taking any more revenue in, get through the end of January, is what I had made a statement at the last council meeting. We will have revenue for November, December, January on top of what we have, you know, we'll have a little better field month by month as we go, but if we get through the month of March with the revenue that we made from July on, June is the second best month at the plunge historically, and May is the fourth best month historically, and those two months we don't have for revenue yet, because we took over the first of July, so.
What's going to happen February after January then, where's the money going to come from? You have been through so much, could you tell?
The money will be covered because of the budget and the revenue will, will make it, make up for it as May and June come into the picture and the summer months come into the picture.
What budget, where will the money come from after January?
Your sales tax.
Sales tax?
Yeah.
It comes from sales tax after January to cover it until May?
If there's a revenue shortfall, the sales tax will cover it, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so, let's see, there's another question, it's clear, because there's rumors out there, man, and I just go, wow, okay, so the sales tax will take care of that, not carbon dioxide.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, then, I guess I did call Carl once and I'm not sure if I was real clear on that either, he's my council person. Are there muni bonds that are sold? And if so, what interest rate? what interest rate?
Well, we found that out, it, it was out there all along. I just didn't realize that these were muni bonds that were covering the cost.
A, a loan, right, for, for the water sewer department? Is that in there?
No, it don't got anything to do with the water and sewer department.
So...
The city sold one-point-nine million dollars in bonds to purchase the, the plunge and improvements to the plunge. The actual plunge purchase was a million four ninety-five is what we paid for the actual plunge.
Right. And that bonds came from where?
Those bonds were, were sold through Doherty and Company. And they were municipal bonds.
They were munis?
Yep. And individuals could buy them. But usually, what they do in the bigger markets is larger mutual funds or investment companies buy up the muni bonds.
Right. In that case, if the larger groups come and buy them up, then it's out of the city. It's, it's not really money from the city. Okay. For instance, if the city, so, remember, if the city sold muni bonds just for the plunge, and members first could buy those munis and get the interest, then the money would be within the city instead of large, like, mutual funds coming in and buying those munis. If, if individuals could buy five hundred, five thousand up to ten thousand dollars worth of munis, and the first ones that would be allowed would be members, I'm just thinking, like...
At, at the time, there weren't any members because there wasn't any membership at the time. This was all pre the, the city buying it and taking it over. So, so there were no members to contact at the time. There were, could have been interested people in town that, you know, could have taken advantage of the loans through Doherty and Company out of Sioux Falls is the company that the city used to fund the...
So is there any way now that there could be offered to members, which I think might increase membership, muni bonds that they could buy and invest and be part of the plunge?
Out of the original one-point-nine? No, there is not unless somebody went out and, and bought them from wherever the, the sales were, were bought. So you as, you as an individual can find out, or I can find out for you if you're interested, you know, who bought all the bonds. And then we can contact those and see whether any of them were willing to, to sell a portion of them.
Do you know, do you know an interest rate those bonds are getting?
They were getting four-point-two, one or two, four, between four-point-one and four-point-two percent.
Do you know how many members would be willing to get some of their IRA money or 401ks and buy munis at four-point-two percent, safe bonds, helping the plunge, helping themselves? I'm speaking as a retired. Four-point-two tax-free muni bonds?
That was prior to there being any. So, that's prior to there, ever being any. So that would have been impossible.
Members, any members, because there were no members at that time. We didn't, we didn't, the plunge didn't have a membership at the time that they were closing for half a year.
So if, by any means, there was some problems, I mean, members just are horrified. They don't want it to close up. They'd rather see one or two days a week closer than that. I mean, I know that. I'm a member and for years. So is there any way now to sell muni bonds to us members at four-point-two percent?
You'd have to contact...
New, new bonds, new, to keep revenue, be revenue...
If, if the city chose to do some major improvements and sold bonds again, you, you definitely would have, I mean, any, any project that the city builds, could do that with, if the city council chose to go after bonding for the funding mechanism.
But that hundred-and-eighty that's done, there's nothing that they can do to get that back?
Not without going out and buying from whoever purchased them originally. And, and I'd be willing to look into that for you if you're interested.
I'd be more interested if members would come in and say, oh, you know, you could buy five hundred dollars worth of stock in the plunge. Four-point-two, huh?
Stock?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, bonds, bonds, bonds.
Bonds are purchasing debt. That's what they're doing.
Right. I know bonds. I know that. I know that. But I also know interest rates now. And I also know taxes and, and people having to take money out of their IRAs and 401ks and, and the big flexibles and how they want, they're looking for tax-free things. And I was just thinking, what a neat thing to offer. Members first.
How much did we finally get those bonds, Harley?
In, see, the election was in March. We were trying to do bank financing up until the first part of June. So it would have been in, in June at the...
Well, we, we borrowed first from the city for, for three months. And then we got the bonds finally okayed.
So it could have been available for people.
There's probably a few members by them.
I think it would be very good PR. I mean, you know, we want to keep that plunge.
Should we pay these bonds off early?
I think that big membership drive took off on July first.
It hasn't kicked in apparently yet.
Because when they first advertised it, I don't know ahead of that. But I remember the month of July was a membership drive.
That was. And a lot of us took advantage of that. But now, you know, it's running roll. And I've been telling people, like, grandparents, buy punch cards for their kids for Christmas. I haven't gone around telling that. I wish that would be out there because grandparents, I'm a grandparent and I know if I have no money to spend anywhere else, who goes first for the grandkids? Sorry about that.
I'm hungry.
So, you know, I've been, I, I talked to my family today and I said, I wish you'd get out there somewhere. She said she would put it on that Chiversite, I guess, as an idea. I've been telling everyone I meet, why don't you buy punch cards for your grandkids? Or, you know, they make nice Christmas presents. And that would help the plunge. We're all looking at ways, like, you know, and letting people come in for a dollar. Might sound awful, but if they come in for a dollar and their parents have to come in and pay full rates, or, you know what I mean, like kids day for a buck. But their parents come, or older than that come, they have to pay. Or like, the veterans day is already passed, but somebody had that idea. And I thought, wasn't that wonderful? The veterans free, their families, their kids have to pay. The veterans a hundred percent free. It's a good PR. And it doesn't cost us anything. It costs us to keep it open with water and lights, heat, lifeguards. But when it's closed, it costs nothing. I thought, oh, very good. But when people are there anyhow, and the lifeguards are there, and you let a group in for nothing, you know, whatever kind of discount, it costs us nothing. And when they're getting these discounts now, the punch cards for, by the way, for Jan, December, the punch cards, they're low right now. I guess they're at sixteen for seventy-five dollars. That's a good deal. And I know they're going to be doing more of that as time goes on. The marketing is going to pick up. We all have our ideas and we all are desperate to, to not have this place close over. And, and I know it'll make money that way. We know that, if it stays open for four months. But we really don't want that.
Yeah. We're looking at what we can to keep it open and, and do specials and do something to get the people in the door to work. We have the same concerns you do and we're working on it with some marketing, et cetera. And we'll find out on the bonds and bonds.
I thought that would be wonderful.
If somebody's interested, we'll just find out and get a little bit more information and get it back to you, Mary.
I get a bond at four-point-two percent tax-free.
Who's paying the four-point-two? The city?
Four-point-two?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, we have to pay it.
What's it cost you every month for?
Our, our, our bond, our bond debt is one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars annually is what the debt service is on the one-point-nine.
The city has to pay that.
The city has to pay that.
Four-point-two percent?
Yes. That is correct. One-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand annually.
Thank you.
For twenty years is the term on that.
Principal and interest.
Yep.
Don?
Yeah.
On the plunge, on the rates on the plunge, this is the veterans down there. We're always pushing. And they have no veterans rate on that. How come?
They do have a veterans rate if they don't pay veterans.
I can't right now say if we have veterans rate or not. I know we're doing some specials with veterans, but I don't know if we have no veterans rate.
Yeah, you know, with a dollar, two dollars off normal rate or something like that.
They have a deal with the DOM, the DOM people now. They're coming in for, like, they're being paid for it by, partly by the DOM. And it doesn't cost the plunge anything.
Okay. More communications from the public?
I just had a question about something. She said, when she was talking about promotional things and everything, doesn't any promotional things like discounts or specials have to be run through you guys to approve first though?
No.
I thought I heard in previous council meeting where they wanted to know if they were offering specials where it's...
We've got all of our membership rates. They all passed by resolution. And then in there it says that we can do other discounts or specials as we, as we feel. Because like, if somebody comes in and has a bad day and we want to give them a pass to come back because it didn't work right, we don't want to come back to the council in order to do that. So we have some flexibility.
So you can have promotional things, special day things?
Yes. Yep. Wallen?
Mr. Mayor is the perfect person for advisory board. Take it to mine. Have you replaced a few French you in a summer?
Oh boy. Any more communication for the public?
I'd like to talk about the plunge since we're kind of ending right now. And I want to, want to commend you all to forgetting it. I know it's a tough decision for a city to go through and get a place like that. Probably it was a, a lot of fours and against and, but yet you go into a city and you see a beautiful building that the city council might be in, or might have a courthouse, or a good police station. Well, this is even better for a city. I mean, it's a wonderful thing. When I went in there and abused the facilities, I, I, I just, I think it's a wonderful thing. I know it's going to be difficult road to go down for a little while for all of you to kind of sort it out. Again, even these questions that pop up and, and to try to make more money and, and get it to the point where the city's not having to spend anything. I think you'll get there by the look of it. I mean, it's a, it's a great space. But what I'm here to talk about is the structure itself and, and a little about it. You, you need a new roof on it. I actually am certified for putting on HydroStop. I got my general contractor's license at twenty-four years old. I go to the international builder's shows, all the different shows. I am, don't know everything, but I'm a seeker of knowledge on buildings. And, and I, I love architecture and all these things. Your building, looking at it, you've got a couple of issues, not just the roof. And I'm not looking to do all these things for you. I, whatever direction you want to go. I think, again, it's a great place. I think that, you know, that's part of why I'm here, whether I do anything to help you on it or not. When I look at the building, one of the things I would think about addressing is also the drive-in on the outside. If you look at going around the backside of it, there's puncture holes. Moisture gets behind that, and that's an issue down the road. And you need to address that is also. You've got the grates inside. Now, I was looking the other day, as far as where the water overflows, you've got some rusty areas in there, spots that may be children or something else. Now you've got not just a building that you have to keep up and make money, but you've got a liability with the city. Whereas before, it was somebody else's liability. So when you put on a new roof, or you're putting on different gutters that maybe are going to ice up in the winter, all these things have to be thought about on this building. Now, on the grates, you know, they, they make great stainless steel grates now that you can get stainless steel covers and put, you know, to wear these children, or someone might not get their hand caught up inside. These are, are things that now, you know, and you've got a long ways to go to, to, to get to the point over the next few years to where you're all comfortable with the building and everything going on. So those are two things I wanted to address. The, the company of HydroStop, they do a lot of the stuff, whether do the coatings for the drive-it stuff go on the outside? They do a roofing system. And it is a system that the US government's been using for years on buildings all over the world. Schools use it. It's, it's a roofing system. And that's why they picked it for the Alamo, because the Alamo has so many structures, metal and concrete and different things. This is why they pick it for a building even like that. Because this material, every, you know, ten, fifteen years, you put a coating on it, it's good for the life of the building. I don't care if it's a hundred years or two-hundred years. Chemicals have come a long way in the last thirty years in construction. So I brought a few things. One is, this is what it, it would be like on plywood. Now, we could put it on den's deck. We can go on insulation. The nice thing about this is with the base coat, the fabric, which is a cross-woven fabric, and then two, the, two top coats, it becomes a fifteen-year warranty. And a fifteen-year is not for me. And that's the nice thing. It comes from the manufacturer. Quest is, like I say, they do projects all over the world. They also own Streetbond, which all the, the streets in New York City, like in Times Square, is done by them. In Memphis, Tennessee, the streets look like brick. It's done by Streetbond, same company. They've got another product for these old buildings that are sandstone, brick. You can't tell it's been sprayed on it. And the water just beads right up. They don't know how long a warranty they can put on it because they put it, fifteen years ago, they put it on a building they can't even add anymore because it just beads up and goes up. You can't even tell it's there. So it's a, the, the warranty, if I was to add another coating on this, is twenty years. Again, material and labor from Quest. I'm a certified installer. So again, I go through the process. I get them to write up the warranty. Too many companies go under. And I understand when a city hires companies, it's like, what's a warranty really mean? You know, are they going to be there in ten, fifteen, twenty years if they say that's how long the warranty's good for? That's why I like a company that they're the ones that offer the warranty if it's done correctly. There's very few materials that it can't go on. And you can see it comes out pretty thick on there. Now, the, the clear coating is just on the back. It's just because when they spray it, they got to be able to cut it because it bonds real well. It's like the TPO that's up on the, the other roof on the plunge, the one that has the pool. Now, if you look at that and get up there, there's hail damage on that. That was probably, it should be coated also. And with this material, usually TPO, if the TPO is loose, I go in with three-inch washers and I leave it. And I screw it down. If it's a black tar roof, I'll leave it. It's the alligatoring with it that goes on that I have to maybe put a den's deck, a plywood on it, something to that effect. Now, that other roof, it's getting time, even though it looks good. When you look at it close, it needs a coating also. So rather than doing a large project, that roof, both of them can be saved and used and, and redone for the next hundred years. On the one that has the gravel or the ballast on it, all that needs to be cleaned off for me to do a product like this. I can usually, you know, fill in the allegation that's going on. I would, on yours, I would rather see, because I can't see it all, in order to give a warranty, either an insul board on it, plywood on it, tongue and groove. The slope looks pretty good going on it. And then the, the other nice thing about this is your air conditioning units don't have to come off. If you did a TPO, or you did a metal, or you did anything, all of this gets coated up onto those units. So I brought by a couple of brochures that you can look at. But, but part of this is, again, on HydroStop, they did the, both of the crawlers for NASA. They, they constantly were cutting into this for the electronics to change it. And nothing they really had would seal it up. Well, HydroStop, when they did it, they realized this is the best because we can cut into it and fix anything we want. And then again, go over it with this coating. Once it's done, if anything happened on that roof, it's real easy for anyone to go up and, and do a repair. And again, Air Force bases, this one here is at fourteen thousand feet in Hawaii. They had problems with ice sheets coming down and breaking any of the roofing that was going on. And again, HydroStop's on there, they don't have any problems. We go over metal roof, hot tar, you know, just about anything. There's a lot of these companies out there now. This is the one, these guys invented this. And it's usually the first ones. The reason why the military uses it, there's one chemical that the owner was explaining to me, that there's seven different grades. Everything he buys is the top grade. It's all tested by FM approvals. And, and FM, when they go in and do anything, they're most expensive ones to, to have done. Most companies don't do it because they'll come in and spot check and take the chemicals and make sure that you're keeping up on everything. Military likes the fact that they use the best materials. I can cut costs on other materials. I don't like doing it. I've always tried to do the best materials of anything out there. So I brought this for the different members if they want to look. In the future, if you ever decided something on Streetbond, it's just information I'm giving for the city. And again, you know, I, I, I think it's wonderful what you've all are trying to do. I know it's not easy. And then I do also, I, I just mainly brought this on the decks because up on that area, I would do walk paths. And even though it's very solid, when you get people with tools and everything else around the air conditioning units, I would want to do some walk paths because they, this same material, we can do... we can do decks with it. It's just, it's very sturdy. And then, uh, this is about the, the cool roofing. When you put this on compared to others, it reflects better than any other material out there. So that, again, is good for the summertime. Um, and then this is, this one here shows for some of the, the stockos. Oh, the stockos and, uh, clear coats that would go on the outside of buildings and places that, again, have been done by this company. And they've been around a long time.
Have you had a chance to look at our package that we're putting out for this?
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
And when you cut into these, then do you have to go back to do the repair? Or do we have something?
No, uh, if you did cut into it, if you've got a, a good maintenance person, I could show, and it's real easy as far as showing how. There's a base coat, then the fabric goes down. The fabric has to be saturated to the point where you can't see any of the material once it's down, and this comes in different widths. So then, once that one dries, then the first top coat is, um, not as white as the final coat, so that everybody easily can see that someone's not cheating someone on the material. The company, in order for them to give this warranty, I give them all the square footage. They figure out all the material, because again, they don't want you to be shorted by somebody that's trying to cheat on the material, and it's easy to tell if they are. Again, if the fabric is covered all the way, and you got one coating and then another. Well, if you did any cut-ins, all you'd have to do is have a small bucket and fabric and fix anything you need up there, which is a, a real good way to go for your maintenance people.
Could you state your name for the record?
Yeah, Tom Pettigrew, with the Ward Roofing. And I didn't know, again, if anybody, you know, I can leave this, and, and this is all the information and the specs on the material. Any other questions?
You might want to go to City Hall and seek out a bid packet.
Temperature, go ahead.
'Cause if you wanna bid it, as long as it meets our specs, you, you should be able to have a chance to.
Again, when you, when you realize that the schools all over, my stepson's doing for the Air Force in, in New Orleans right now, Air Force Base down there. All, it seems like the county offices, everyone is, is more and more all over the country. Um, it's, it's very popular around all the coasts. Um, it is not as, uh, it isn't well-known in these kinda, in an area like this, yeah. But it is the way to go, that's why I, I, I recommend. I'm not a rapper or anything for the company. I just believe in it, and, uh, you know.
So when you apply this temperature and moisture issues, like you have to have a certain temperature?
You, I don't, it, around like a regular shingle, um, below forty degrees, I don't put it on, even though there's a winter formula. I, I'll do it, uh, with a heater in a small area, but I'm not gonna do a whole roof below forty. Um, and then, as far as rain goes, you can tell when it got, 'cause it dries fairly quick, and if a freak storm came in, I can tell where it got hit, 'cause it changes a little on the color, and I just have to redo that area. Um, so again, it's pretty foolproof on that.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Any other communications from the public?
I got something for a second. Uh, Janie Montgomery called me about the depot.
Okay.
And she wanted everybody to know that all she's really gonna do is like have Santa Claus read to kids and stuff like that. She's gonna get ahold of the Boys and Girls Club. She's gonna have hot chocolate and cider and stuff like that served out there. And I told her the only problem I have is there ain't no sewer for the public to use the bathrooms. And she says that they got them blocked off, but I still have a problem with no bathrooms there. I don't know why we can't get them fixed, but Harley told me that the rates are cheaper in February for plumbers. How is that? That's what Harley said, that rates for plumbers are cheaper in February.
I think it'd be more expensive.
Is that what she told me?
Contractor that I talked to said that if you could wait till after the holidays, that he would have to, you know, drop another job that he's got going and do a full plumbing. And what we're doing is not just fixing the plumbing.
I know what we're doing.
This is a full replumb from, uh, the sinks and the toilets and all the way down to the.
Any proposals on that, or did you just go to one plumber and say, uh, we need you to do it?
We, we talked to the one plumber on that one.
We'll, we'll get into that here later on.
Yeah. Well, anyway, she said that that's all they're gonna do, and, and some lady had all these Christmas decorations and, and I guess she wanted these people to use it on that, that building. Her husband passed away or something, and she's trying to get rid of a lot of the stuff that they have around the house. And they're gonna try to get the Chamber to buy it after they're done, but to use it all the time. But that's what she wanted me to tell them.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. How's your, any other communication from the public?
Hey, we'll continue. We've got some bids that we've received on a, thanks, Daniel.
Thank you.
Got bids we received on a glider hanger. We've got a copy of there in your bid packet. And was that Public Safety that dealt with this, Craig?
What's that?
The hangers?
Yes.
You're, you're recommending taking a little bit?
Yes, I am. Taylor Construction, what building? For a hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
And that's motion to accept that little bit?
Motion to accept it.
A motion by Craig to accept a little bit on the airport hanger. Second, and second discussion, questions?
That does come with a hydraulic door. Every one of these were bid with a hydraulic door.
This is cement floors.
Yep. Yep. They, they're gonna have electrical panels for all they got those hooked into.
We got a five-year guaranteed lease on this building at five hundred a month?
Yep.
So we're still short. Can we increase the lease any to cover the building or?
Might be able to, or we're gonna have a whole bunch of money from Pete Lane at the FAA. Let's do some gravel out there, that we're gonna have to spend at the airport, so it don't matter one way or another.
And in discussion, questions? Got a motion, a second, to accept a little bit on the airport hanger from Taylor Construction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no. And ordinance, we've got a first reading. Is this, do you want this as a first reading, Wes, or just?
Well, I guess unless anybody has a problem with it, the only thing I, I can see is if, uh, there's only one provision in there, if you, if we give somebody like a ten-day extension, if, uh, unless somebody wants to put another provision in there for more extensions, and I mean, 'cause the problem is, is our current ordinance with this, I believe it's, it could be up to two years. Once somebody started demolishing something, they got two years, and that's, that's a little bit much. I mean, I don't, somebody could start tearing a building down, and walk away for two years. And I just, I think sixty days is enough. What?
If you've got a big.
This just, just, this is just for residential.
Oh. And you worked with Scott on this? Scott didn't have any?
Scott's the one who actually basically drew it up.
But he doesn't have any problem with it?
No. Well, he agreed. I mean, it's.
Well, I agree too.
It's hard to enforce something if, uh.
Ask him, you know, if, if he had anything he wanted to add?
Yeah, if we're gonna do that, it might make sense to do something for residential, but also do something for.
Commercial?
Commercial or something type structures.
Well, there is. There's provision there for bonding. I've actually, I guess, I don't know what, on a commercial structure, they gotta post a five-thousand-dollar bond. And then if it isn't completed in a certain, uh, timeframe, then, uh, the city has the right to, uh, either hire a contractor to go in there and finish it.
But I think the timeframe, looks like it's still the same sixty days.
No, it's, it's, it says in here the specified timeline.
Oh, okay.
For all str- for all structures other than residential accessory structures, the applicant shall be cred- required to post a five-thousand-dollar bond payable to the city for the faithful completion of specified project within the specified time limit. And it says, "In the event of a permitted project is not completed within the specific specified timeframe, the building official, after giving a twenty-day notice to the applicant to have the project completed either through contract or with city crews, the applicant shall be billed for any cost in excess of the amount of the bond."
Would that specified time limit be up to the building inspector then, when they issue the permit?
That's kinda what I'm assuming.
Maybe, maybe you want it there, maybe you want control on it from the council with provisions to extend. I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to bring it up, I guess, tonight, to see what everybody else wanted.
This doesn't specify residential or commercial on here, though. That's what I see. It's just all structures, and if we, somebody starts tearing down a big building, it, sixty days might be questionable.
Second ground ground says for all structures other than residential.
Yeah, other than residential accessory structures.
But that's for the bonding, though.
Yeah. So basically, that's telling, then the, the first part deals with residential.
Maybe so.
So we can specify it. I guess we can, we can specify it in there, that's fine.
It says all buildings permits issued for the moving of structures or demolition, so it doesn't say.
But then it goes on in the second one, for all structures other than residential.
That's when the bond.
Talking about a bond.
That kinda clarifies the two in my mind, that we can add and subtract whatever you wanna do. I just think we need to, we need to tighten this thing up a little bit.
I agree with you. Two years is a little long, Wes.
Only problem.
About ninety days instead of sixty.
I got no problems.
Commercial or not commercial, put the one, fine, whatever, but commercial, non-commercial, ninety days.
Ninety days.
Only problem I can see is something like that is if we ever have to tear that SOS building down, it's gonna take more than ninety days, 'cause you're gonna have to do that block to block. But you know, it says in here that we can give.
Some circumstances it might take longer.
'Cause you can't tip that over to the buildings right next to it.
Well, we can put in there something about in the event of an unforeseeable circumstance. I mean, we can add time or subtract time. I mean, I guess it doesn't, I, it don't necessarily need to be the first reading. I just wanted to get this process started. So I guess, uh, I don't know who this would actually fall to on the committee.
I was thinking, I don't know what it really goes to in a particular committee.
Well, and if, if I'll go ahead and work out some more, I guess, we'll put ninety days, and we'll put some wording in there about.
Residential.
Residential and then special circumstances.
Okay, so if anybody has any ideas or clarification or questions, suggestions on that, get, get ahold of Wes.
Yeah, I guess read through it. If there's something you wanna add, subtract, let me know. I guess, in other words, I know that maybe we should go into ninety days, and then, commercial, maybe, maybe there should be a provision in there, something about, uh, on the spec- special circumstances, it, it should come before the council, I guess. I, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thanks, Wes. Uh, we also have ordinance eleven forty-one, supplemental ordinance. This is the first reading of it. What it does is it adds money into our budget from our last year where we had some shortfalls. And we would like to make one change on this. On that legal, we've got it right now fifty-six thousand. We'd like to change that to fifty-eight thousand. We don't think we're gonna need the fifty-eight, but if we go a little over the fifty-six, we'd have to supplement the budget again. It makes sense to do it one time. We don't need it, we just don't spend it, it stays in the general fund.
So why are we, why are we doing this again? Because we were short last year?
Yep, the, uh, legal, uh, the, the reasons for each of these line items, under legal is we had the lawsuit that settled on the Udi case, and we had, uh, legal fees that we weren't aware of at the time that you did this a year ago in September. Uh, this is the budget that has to be done by September prior to the year that you're, you're doing it, so you have unexpected things. Uh, the golf course building didn't happen until this year, and that's the hundred thousand dollars for the, for the golf course maintenance building, uh, for a total in the general fund of the hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Uh, under the liquor lodging, we have a contract with Chamber that eighty percent of all, uh, sales tax that's collected under the liquor lodging goes to the Chamber, and we, our sales tax revenues are up, uh, a little bit for, for the time period. And the same thing applies to the bid district. Uh, the reason for the expenditure there is that, uh, uh, income is, is up a bit for the, for the bid district. And the solid waste, on the second page, you paid that off a year early, so you only budgeted for one payment, because you made both payments to, to pay that off early. We needed to, to supplement the budget for the final payment on the solid waste, and you did that early in the year in April, and we just waited till the end of the year to see what we, we needed to supplement for the budgets.
Well, I didn't pay a motion if you want to go ahead and schedule a second reading or a next meeting of this ordinance.
Come on.
Motion for the second. Any questions? Any more questions, questions about what we've got? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, no? Resolution, contingency transfers. And Harley, why don't you run through this right quick too, so everybody understands this a little bit better?
Okay, the contingency transfers, you had the eighty thousand dollars in the contingency fund for unexpected expenses throughout the year, is what you had in the original, uh, appropriation ordinance, uh, done in September of twenty twelve. Uh, these are the funds that, uh, for various reasons needed to be added. Uh, in the mayor's fund, we had some extra travel, uh, by the council that normally didn't, uh, do some traveling that affected that budget. In all of the budgets, the, uh, health insurance rates are more than what we had budgeted for health insurance, and we, we've kept with the same company for a lot of years, and it may be time for a review on that. But every time we come up for a review in March, we, we talk about it, and it's decided that, uh, we stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, but the council may wanna consider that as an option. Uh, two of the heavy users are no longer in the health insurance pool anymore, so we may, there may be a benefit there. Uh, the, uh, building inspector budget was for the SOS building and the, uh, the other building that we're wanting to try down, the community action, that we had the extra engineering costs on. Uh, we have nothing in the, in this year's budget for nuisances and building inspections for, for going after our combinations and demolitions, so we have.
I thought you said fifty thousand dollars we approved for that.
Yeah, in next year's budget. You did that in September for twenty fourteen.
So we're not gonna tear down any more buildings till then, are we?
Well, the sixty-five thousand, or sixty-five hundred that's here was for the, uh, Albertson Engineering for going in and making a report for the, uh, action that we're going against the, on the community action building and the SOS building, against the hot springs citizens for whatever that.
We sure pay a lot of money for engineering firms when we have an engineer.
Now, that structural engineering, we were required to buy the legal counsel to, to get an outside structural engineering recommendation and report to go to the judge. And then the same on the nuisance and complaints budget. That's the one that you've got fifty thousand in for next year, but we had grass and weed cleaning up that we paid outside contractors on, that we had nothing budgeted for this year.
I'd really like to know how much of this money we recoup. Every time we tear these places down, clean a property up, I mean, how much do we really recoup? I mean, that's.
If the city doesn't get paid for billing on it, then we can assess them or special assess them, uh, through the tax process.
How often does that happen?
Well, this is the first year that we went after it since I've been here.
Did we get any money back this year from people cleaning their properties?
I have, I didn't check that before the meeting, so I don't know. We bill two.
We supposed to.
We bill two.
'Cause over on, on Barry Avenue, we tore down that garage and cleaned up those properties, and that guy was supposed to, gave Scott the okay, do it, and he said he'd pay for it.
And the, the bills went out late this year on that.
Why? Why?
Why?
Why'd they go out late this year on that?
Well, later this year, after the season was done, is when we build them.
Why don't we build when we're done building?
That's a good question, and we will rectify that. Airport was several things that you approved throughout the year for the airport, plus the salaries are, are over in the airport budget. Uh, parks budget, uh, is the same, we're spending more time in the parks, uh, than what we had for labor benefits, and the library is, uh, the insurance, uh, is about half of that is insurance reasons, and, uh, the rest of it is just-
Can you explain that parks, then, you said we're spending more time in parks, so it costs us more money?
The, what we budgeted, we're, we're dividing the people out in our budgets, we, we have eight guys at the street department, and some of their time is in snow, in street cleaning, in streets, in parks, in sem- well, cemeteries by itself. Uh, so we just prorate them throughout the year, you know, estimating where we think we're gonna spend our time for the year. We had thirty-eight thousand dollars budgeted in parks time, and we spent fifty-eight thousand in labor in the parks for this, for twenty thirteen.
Okay, that's where you need to be using that, uh, cheap labor.
Cheap labor, the inmates, you talked about.
Yes, sir.
We need to buy a bus so we can haul them ourselves.
That's a good point, because we just had a conference call on that very subject this morning, because State Home, uh, wants to do something different with theirs, so if they get out of the mix, then, uh, Star Academy, State Home, and the three that are splitting the transportation bill to get the inmates from that city, uh, down here to Hot Springs, and to Star Academy, of course. So if State Home pulls out, then it's gonna be a fifty-fifty split, and we may or may not want to be footing the bill for that, although the inmate labor is, is a lot cheaper, about half of what we would put on temporary help for the, for some. That was the bill that Carl questioned earlier, that was split between parks and golf courses.
Thanks, Harley. So I entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, more discussion? Got a motion and a second to approve the resolution, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Personnel, there are several items that are all printed on your agenda, you can see them. Full business, we've got a copy of that flat that the council wanted at the last meeting, it's on that, uh, unplanted city acreage, so I entertain a motion to adopt the flat.
So move.
Second, got a motion and a second, discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? And nuisance committee, not sure who that is.
That's me.
Okay.
I'm kind of wondering if that nuisance committee shouldn't just be added right to the, uh, public works committee, it just kind of seems to me it kind of goes hand in hand with the stuff they do.
Public works?
No, public safety. I said public work, I meant public safety.
There you go.
The only thing I would say about that is our public safety meeting is pretty long, pretty, pretty, pretty full schedule on it.
This is only-
Well, no, we sat for two hours, I couldn't wait for Harley. The meeting wasn't that long once he showed up.
The council can act without me being present.
Is that the feeling of the council, like to just have that nuisance duties added to public safety?
Don't matter to me, I'm on the legal way.
How many, how many is not in nuisance committee as an hour?
Two.
Well, let's just do it, that's easy.
Okay.
Uh, new business, we've got liquor licenses to approve. I've talked with Bob Evans about this, there's not really problems with any of them, so there's no, nothing that came up that I'm aware of. So unless the council would have a question or a problem with any one of them, or any, several of them, we can pull them off the list. Otherwise, if you don't, I'd entertain a motion to adopt, to approve all of the liquor licenses.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion and questions? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Demolition proposals, all, all golf course maintenance buildings.
Harley, I don't have those, do you have those numbers?
Yeah, I've got, uh, ended up with three proposals that came in, uh, they, they kind of varied in price. Uh, the high one was seventeen thousand five hundred for the demolition of all three of the golf course buildings. The next bid was seventeen thousand, the low bid was nine thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, but that bid did not include the removal of any of the concrete floors, and we need to make sure we visit with the, the landowner up there and find out whether he wants the concrete floors removed, and the old pro shop, uh, you know, we'd have a big dirt pile in the middle of the pavement up there, but that's his lot, so maybe all the pavement around the old pro shop needs to come out too, you know, that's, would be, uh-
Could the city take concrete out and save that kind of money?
Yeah, personally, I think the city shouldn't spend ninety-three hundred bucks, and we should take them all down ourselves and save that money.
Well, did, no one offered, did we offer them to, to give to anybody?
Yes, we, we had, uh, proposals out, requests for proposals advertised in the paper with two options. One option was for the purchase and removal as salvage building materials, so some rancher wanted to take the pole barn and-
Why didn't we just offer to give it to someone?
And demolition disposal and cleanup of buildings was option two, and, you know, any other proposals that they would have had was, was option three. And, uh, the only bid that we had and reference was made, actually, there's a five-page thing from Baker Timber, uh, that, to bid on the proposal with all their background and all that, they said it's all for their disposal, and there isn't much salvage value, the bottom of the big steel building was rotten out around the bottom, and it was too big to actually move as a signal structure.
So do you think the street shop will be not so busy this winter, or they could tear those down?
Just setting priorities, so, you know, if that, these buildings are a priority to get rid of, so we give the order next week, and we can get them down there if you want, but-
I think the city could take the concrete out and gobble what's left.
Look, you know, it's, the, the low bid is nine thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars for moss rock landscaping out of custard.
But did we offer them for free?
I guess you can't, like-
Yeah, that'd make at least a dollar on the billing.
But if we, if we would advertise it, minimum bid one dollar-
For salvage, you know, you can't say what you're gonna offer them for a proposal, I mean, you can't-
But, well, you should just put a minimum bid one dollar.
I thought we couldn't give city property away.
We surplus these as our number.
Yeah, we did. So we could give them away after we're surplusing them?
Just getting rid of them.
Well, we surplus all that stuff at street shop, we didn't give it away.
Welch and the-
Cop cart, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we didn't give it away, so. I didn't think we'd give city property away.
Well, somebody could have bid to take it, you know?
I know, yeah.
We see no bids that way, they were all demolition bids.
Why is that? They just have a problem having all the equipment that we have and the manpower, and we are going in the winter. They have a problem spending money I haven't paid somebody for. And this would be a good project for inmate labor, too.
Especially with our new side dump, we could haul that stuff in, and the city does get to cut gravy and edge mine for tearing buildings down.
Or it could guide burn them.
Yeah. Take them up to empty lot up there and burn them.
Burn them in place.
Burn them in place.
Too many nice boundaries running, I don't think Calvin likes to do that.
What's the feeling of the council, you want to pay something and then the city crews take out the concrete?
I don't want to pay none. You guys looking for a project?
I'd like to see you come out and burn weeds off the airport.
No, no, I'm talking about the project. There's some trusses and a lot of good steel for windbreak material.
I think city ought to tear it down, I agree with Dave, it's getting winter time. I think we ought to reject the proposal and tear it down ourselves.
Your motion to reject the proposal, sir?
So move.
Okay, got a motion to reject the proposals?
I'll second that.
Got a second, more discussion? I like the feeling that we'll just get rid of ourselves, so. Okay, got a motion and a second to reject all proposals, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Matter of fact, flow preventer, is that yours, Mike?
I put it under.
Craig put it on there, we talked about this on our committee. The rural water has hooked a direct line into our line on follow the road, and we have no protection from the city water at this point for cross contamination. And, uh, it's my recommendation, the committee's recommendation, that we install a vault and install a backflow preventer in case of, uh, pressure drop in town which could siphon unchlorinated well water into the city water system.
Why should we pay to do it?
Because it's protecting our system, it wasn't.
Why can't we make them do it, their tap along to us?
I don't think we can, I don't think we can, no.
It's outside of the city limits, they're tapping onto their own line outside the city.
No, we're gonna put it right at the state limit and do it.
Where they, where they tapped in.
I know, that's, that's- That was another contract that was working pretty loosely, I guess, or something there, huh? Well, I, I make a motion to go forth with this, that's like, nah, I like knowing that we have protection there. How much is this gonna cost? What did we say, about twenty dollars?
I wasn't quite prepared to put this on the agenda, but Craig put it on there anyway, but I would like to see some cost estimates too before we, we jump into it, but I think it's something we do need to do, and the council feels strongly about doing, I'm guessing around fifteen thousand.
I put it on there because the water guys came to me saying that chlorine levels were really low right there, it's down, and they think it is from rural water coming back into the system.
Well, I have a question, I thought we discussed at once, and I could be confused here, but beans are connected in that, and if there was, for whatever reason, they had a problem, beans are connected in the line and we're supplying the water, partially on the water, we would take the blame if there was any type of cross contamination.
If something happens and it comes back, but the correction is wrong, I'm not talking about coming back dis-
Which I am concerned with, what you're saying is, there is a contamination from that point on, that would still fall on us.
Yeah, we'd have to start testing water from our well.
Right, some new regulations that came out here a couple of years ago that due to the fact that we, at that time was their main supplier, and I think we're still classified as their main supplier, I'm not sure, but if they have a bad fecal coliform test on the Nebraska line, we start testing at our wells. So, you know, basically, it's a- The blame goes to-
The blame would be, it would fall on us.
So I, I, you know, I understand what you're saying about seriousness, but this is something we really need to take seriously.
We've been talking about this as long as I can remember, you guys in public works, we've been talking about that.
When they first put in that-
When they first put in that-
They've only drilled the well.
But we still talked about before that. I know we did. Anyway, there's the motion and a second.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second on the floor, more discussion?
I think we should table that motion until we get cost estimates.
I'll second that.
Got a motion?
It is a motion.
Got a motion to table, and I think I had a second.
I can move with that.
Motion and a second to table this till we get cost estimates, all in favor of the table, any?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no?
Well, we will move forward with-
Yes, we will move forward.
The next one's mine, too.
Okay, get ready, go for it.
I think we need to start putting out proposals for plumbing and electrical. Harley has a, a bad taste in his mouth about some of the plumbing. Fair to the plumbers or electrical people in Hot Springs.
Are we gonna, are we going to bid out every-
I'm not saying bid out. Proposals, that's not bidding, just like we do on our gas and our propane, every time we get it.
Supposed to.
Supposed to. Except plumbers, everybody else does.
So what do you ask?
I just think he needs to get proposals from all the plumbers and electricians instead of just calling one person and do it all the time. It's not fair to the ones in town.
Either that, or how about a rotation basis, maybe?
Yeah. Either or, don't matter to me, I, I just think it's gotta be fair.
You can go along with that with a time limit, I mean, if there's something, we gotta merge, we need something done twenty-four hours, you have a proposal to this, if you want a job or something.
That's fine, I have no problem with that.
But, I mean, because I've seen people drag their feet for a long time.
Sometimes you have to get it done, Russell, it's not some people waiting, somebody adds my turn.
Well, would you, one lot of time, one of, um, a rotation too, if it's not dealt with in a timely fashion, I mean-
A lot of time, they're gonna say, yeah, I'm busy, I can't get to it.
Exactly.
You just gotta get on.
But make it fair for all contractors, I guess, is what the, the gist of the thing is.
There is an education process, if you have the same person working on a building, they, they don't have to retrain themselves on where all the electrical's running, where all the plumbing's running.
A plumber is a plumber, is a plumber, is an electrician is an electrician, come on, don't tell me-
So you're gonna, if you have something wrong with your plumbing or electrical, you can try to find the plumber or something that did to your house, Harley? They know it, or you can just hire a plumber.
A little bit different in residential versus commercial.
Okay.
There is some truth to what he said.
I agree.
If you have the same plumber in there working, he'll know the system better, guys.
They charge by the hour, it's easier from go and say, I know that, I put this in such and such, I know what-
We, we had the issue with the Episcopal Church on their water leak, you know, we had a plumber up there, or they had a plumber up there three different times trying to figure out where the, where the plumbing was running to, and it ended up being a city problem and not a, not a church problem.
And the city found it, not the plumber, right?
I believe so, in that case.
So we can have the city fix all the plumbing?
Well, they're not licensed plumbers, they can do this up to the curb stop.
Just give, just give all the contractors a chance, quit.
Just because you have like a couple of plumbers in town, Harley, don't mean you can't give them a chance.
I have never said that.
Harley, look, she did two to me.
Okay, anything else on that?
That's all I have.
Okay. Committee reports, Carl, did you have anything from that in the motion at all?
Do we? No, I don't think so.
Well, we just did some evaluation, evaluation of some of the positions, um, for the water and sewer performance conditions, because we're using their licenses, and, um, then we discussed possibly the Christmas gifts for our employees, and we thought about doing something like a six-month, um, membership at the plunge, and it may decrease our insurance premium for health benefits also. And, um, then we did some evaluation of the rezoning, and Scott was gonna get some more information back on, uh, up to that at our next meeting, so that was the only thing we talked about.
Okay. Thanks.
Public works, Dwight?
Still haven't heard from Johnson Control on a meeting that was supposed to happen last week. South Dakota luminaire and traffic signal inspection, September three town. And, uh, the highways were checked for proper illumination, the signs, and a lot of ours failed. Maybe getting ready for a bill from the state on that. Still looking at more locations for the water fill station, guys, we haven't hashed out a spot for that yet. Uh, the Almond Street project with hills material and the pans, who's doing the contract work on the panels?
Simon.
Simon.
Did they make drop them on those real bad?
I sure have, they're nice.
Oh, they're nice.
I go Broadway, says the streets closed today.
They finally opened them, the streets were live for a week before they worked on them. People just got used to driving the cars, and it was nothing to be worried about. Sorry, Dwight. Sorry, Sid.
We might- We might have to look and give these guys an extension. I know that's gonna rub a couple of people wrong on this council.
I won't do it.
Oh, it's, you're not the only person on this council, Craig. So just hold on, just hear it out. You know, we got some freezing weather coming here. Do you want these guys pouring concrete at ninety degrees?
Why didn't they start when they supposed to?
You know, Craig, I don't know. But you guys keep messing with these contractors hard like this, we're not gonna get anybody doing any work for this city.
Or we keep sloughing off like we have in past years, they just expect it from us.
But we're gonna have to possibly look at doing that. And if you guys vote not to, that's fine, I'm not the only vote on this council. Uh, backflow preventer, water, water. Uh, asphalt zipper, we are looking at some contractors for doing our work next year. And we talked about trading in the spin doctor, which is the valve exerciser for the fire hydrants and shut-off valves for the mains in town. And that's it.
Okay. Thanks. Public safety, Craig.
Dave went to our, our safety conference out in Mitchell.
You got anything at all?
Huh?
You got anything in mind?
No, that's just, just you.
Anyway, I went to Mitchell for, for loss prevention and safety conference, was there for the nineteenth, the twentieth, and the twenty-first. Uh, it was very, I'll be honest, I've been to them before, I dealt with OSHA in California. And this was a lot better than those there. They actually had some good classes to attend. Uh, if we keep doing this in the future, which I would recommend, there should be at least two people to go. Because they have two and three classes going on at a time. A lot of, a lot of them are very good classes to go to, some actually pinpoint supervisors and stuff like that, things that they need to look for. Uh, so if we keep going on with this, I would say two people every time. And I would think that beans, the safety stuff is widespread. It's not just equipment and stuff like that. Uh, so I think every time somebody goes, at least one of the two that go should be a new person from a different department. So everybody can kinda get everything out of it instead of sending the same people over and over and over. It was something worthwhile, I, to be very honest, I was not expecting it. I went on the short end of, of a big mess, but yeah, it was, it was something good to go to. And I'd be recommending we keep on with it. Uh, signed us up, the city up for, uh, you get CDs, DVDs, paperwork and stuff like that. I don't know, has any of that showed up yet?
I don't think so.
Yeah, it's only been really a week, so. But, um, it was good to go to, it was very informative. Um, they actually, it, it's not very often that somebody off the council goes evidently. And they actually said that they would prefer at least one council person to go. Just for the simple fact that it's good for the council to know what to implement and to expect from their supervisors and department heads. And at the same time, that each of the department heads go to those classes. So that you can work with them if they have problems and you understand what the problems they are. So you're both educated on the same thing. So to make a long story short, it'd be something I would recommend we keep on doing. And I was told, I was asked to be on the safety thing. So, and I don't have a problem with that. But as far as future work goes, I would say that we should keep on with it. Um, they offer you meals and everything, so it's not like it's a whole lot out of your pocket. It'd be something I'd highly recommend to keep going forward with. And if I understood correctly, some of the things that they let me know that I brought back, our attorney and Harley and Don are already aware of, that there's a lot of different things that you can get on board with. This is, one was the lawsuit stuff that I talked to Don and Harley about. Another thing was something off the wall, if I remember where I put it. Yeah, like some of the equipment that they recommend that we start deleting for certain jobs, you can get grants of fifty percent of purchasing. In this case, they're talking about a handheld cutoff saw. They will pay up to fifty percent for a new handheld cutoff saw if, and we can keep our old one long as we promise not to use it on metal pipe. And it's little things like that, that if we're looking at improving some of our equipment and our safety stuff, there's a way to cut the cost on it. You get on a list and they inform you what equipment they're willing to give you grants on. Um, in some places, or some, I heard manufacturers actually will cut twenty-five percent off their cost if you go through those programs. So your actual savings could be as much as seventy-five percent. So that's just some good educational stuff, and there is some offers, financial offers for things to get part of the programs. And it would be something I'd recommend that people enjoy. And that's it?
Hey. Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave, for going.
Wes, cultural recreation?
We don't have a meeting, but we will have one shortly. Those meetings are now going to be at the city hall instead of the library. Like our next meeting is, would be scheduled for what, next, uh?
Be this Wednesday night.
This Wednesday?
First Wednesday night of the month usually.
Oh, so I guess I'm struggling to have one soon.
Well, you're, you're still gonna do them at my time, I, I was thinking about doing three or four.
No, we're, we're gonna try a couple at night in our city hall, five fifteen.
I guess we have a meeting next Monday? Nine o'clock?
Next Monday, nine o'clock. You are, unless it's a holiday, those two, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Wes. Harley?
Just a couple real quick things. Uh, the police department, one of the, the CDs that Dave talked about, the police department had already purchased. And we have updated all of the police policies to include the taser. And taser training will be held on the twelfth of December. So we're looking for council representatives as crash taser doctors. Get tased, just kidding. But anyway, uh, two-fold, so we do have an updated, all of the officers carry one of these with all of the policies that affect the police department, newly revised with all of the new requirements that Dave mentioned from the safety workshop, to include the taser, as I said, and that training will be done this month. FEMA, uh, we had, the county had urged us as a city to, uh, put in a request for FEMA funding based on our snow removal if they got declared as a snow removal emergency. Uh, we had applied for a little over thirty thousand dollars in, in expenses for snow removal as well as the brush cleanup afterwards. Uh, FEMA had our first meeting, first of two mandatory meetings, was an applicant briefing, briefing last week. We have our second kickoff meeting this Wednesday for the individual part of it. And we can recoup some of the costs that we were doing anyway. Uh, one of the items that they were encouraging was us to grind our timber rather than burn it. So the council needs to decide what you wanna do there. FEMA does cover eighty-five percent of all the costs. Uh, we have one bid for grinding of fifty-five thousand cubic yards of brush, which is roughly the size of the two piles that we have combined out at the, uh, street shop area now. And that quote is twenty-one thousand dollars if we...
Or we can just burn it for free.
We can burn it, but, uh...
For free.
We, we have to, uh, FEMA says we have to get the necessary, uh...
Bill first?
Permit for the, uh, air quality permits that we have. I don't think South Dakota has any of those. We probably don't have to worry, but these FEMA people are coming in from other states that you don't have a way to...
See, that's why I think we shouldn't take the money from FEMA. We don't need the money. That's kinda like just taking money out of this pocket and putting it over here in this pocket. That's it, it's just... That, but that's just me, of course, I'm kind of a...
Just one vote.
I, I save money, I don't like to just keep blowing money. I, you start taking money from the government and you, you, you start getting strings attached. I just...
So do I drop it and not...
I would.
Attempt to recruit eighty-five percent of the, the money that we spent anyway, I mean...
Who, who makes up FEMA, Harley?
The United States.
You betcha.
It's the people in Chicago and New York.
Yeah, the people of Hot Springs and the people in Fall River Road, the...
It's your IRS dollars that you pay in withholding if you're working is what funds the federal government.
I, I just...
We can't burn it, doesn't it get the grant?
No, no, you, we can burn it. We have to, you know, let them know what, what we're gonna do with it and where we're disposed of.
Pursue the grant.
I mean, that's what, that's the direction I was going, but if the council doesn't want to, you know, I'll, I'll sure spend my time doing something else.
Just keep taking from the taxpayer.
Well, I don't have a clear direction.
I would say... I would go ahead and pursue the grant at least we can find out if we're eligible or not.
Eighty-five percent of twenty-one thousand is about seventeen thousand eight sixty.
You proved to me you had twenty-five thousand dollars worth of cost.
We, we had, uh...
Thirty thousand, yeah.
Thirty or twenty?
For thirty.
We had four days of the snow removal and all we...
It's gonna snow anyway, you can't blame them.
Well, it was a big storm and it, the storm was declared a disaster from Fall River County.
Yeah, get on everybody else's back.
So there was twelve thousand, actually twenty-one thousand dollars worth of snow removal potential eligibility for the four days of the storm. And there's an additional ninety-five hundred for, uh, October seventh through the twenty-fifth of branch cleanup.
So total amount is...
Total bound is thirty-one thousand four hundred and nine dollars at this point. Not counting the twenty-one thousand if you decide to grind the brush.
Well, you know, I'll never vote to take money, burn it, grind it, or you can do it for free. But again, then again, I try to watch over the people's money instead of just taking it.
So when are we gonna pick up all the branches from the storm?
Uh, we, we...
There's still branches.
I thought you guys said you were picking up.
Yeah.
Well, we still did afterward, but there's still branches down that they never, ever picked up.
The, the direction that I gave our guys, 'cause they're out trimming alleys and trimming trees and boulevards. And I said, if you pass an area while you're doing that that still has branches or limbs along it, go ahead and pick them up.
And I've seen him do that, and that's very, this works good.
There's still branches down from the storm that's not been picked up. And I told you and Don both about it.
Okay, and those the ones over on Fifth and Sixth Street?
Fifth Street. They're both on Fifth Street.
I think they were supposed to go and get them, but if they didn't yet...
Yeah, is it still there today?
Yep. We'll get them. Anything else, Harley?
No, sir.
Did you get your direction on that?
I heard tomorrow.
I'd say check into it.
We're gonna tend to checking into the grant.
It'll cost nothing to check into.
And I don't have anything. We do have to go to executive session for kind of a legal update. So I entertain a motion to go to executive session for legal matters.
I'll move.
Motion to Second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
We do, I can vote it's a model.
People have done what we told them to do, they just offered it. People would pay us this way as it is.
That's what I wanna make sure, so I'm just gonna try it out.
I surplus a bunch of his properties after the building came famous.
And that's, oh, minimum, minimum bid of five dollars.
That's not how this is voted to.
We didn't vote, we talked.
You voted to surplus. But I hear it's a war right now.
I don't like our gym that has...
Motion to adjourn.
Our executive session...
We'll bring her back up.
By George, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Dwight, no, I'm just commuting.
You are.